Good evening. Tonight is Monday, April 9th, 2018. This meeting may be held live. We're with the high school's music room. Ms. Haynes, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Powell, here. Ms. Swope?
Here.
Mr. Vecchia?
Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Mr. Kapoianko?
Here.
President Vecchio, please lead us on a pledge of allegiance.
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Powell, do we have any delegates and visitors this evening?
We do not tonight. We have no students this evening due to games and practices.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 26th, 2018 meeting?
So moved.
Motion by President Vecchia, seconded by Ms. Swope. Any discussion on the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. We do have a few warrants this evening. A warrant in the amount of $153,119.20. We also have payroll warrant, SPW 18-18, an amount of $614,714.96. And SPW 18-20, $658,662.68. So I have a motion to approve all of the warrants.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Fabiano, seconded by Ms. Swope. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
One.
One abstentions. And we do have a budget transfer request in the amount of $49,989.89. So I have a motion to approve the budget transfer.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Powell, seconded by Ms. Swope. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Powell, would you please let us know what's wrong with the WHS sailboat?
Sure. Sure. There's an old sailboat that the sailing team used years and years ago that's at the Belle Isle Boatyard. And they want us to get it out of there, but it's not, it can't even be fixed. They're kind of using it for parts, I guess. So we want to surplus if we can get it out of there.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to surplus the WHS sailboat.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci. Any further discussion?
Is there any cost?
No. So we've provided pictures and they've had somebody go down there and take a peek at it, go through the boat, see if there are salvageable pieces to it. They feel there are certain parts of the boat that could be salvaged. So it goes through the process at Town Hall where they'll surplus it and then, you know, recoup some of the money as opposed to just destroying it and having it taken away. Plus, it saves us from having to remove it.
Yeah. Which has cost them.
Sure.
Will we take that money and put it into another boat?
The money doesn't come to us. Goes back to the town.
Goes to the town.
Goes back to the town.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Moving on to subcommittee reports. Mr. Fabiano, the Athletics Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee met last week.
We'll do Athletic first?
Yep.
So we did an Athletic Subcommittee on April the 3rd at 6 o'clock in an open meeting. The Subcommittee members were myself and Gus. Also Jen Powell and Susan Swope were there. Others, Vasily Malios, Matt Serino, Phil Lundberg, Rob O'Leary, and Marie Finn were there as well. First, we discussed the tennis courts. Mrs. Finn, or Coach Finn, was asking us to address one of the four courts needed to be updated and repaired. There was a piece in the middle of the court that needed to be repaid. And also, one of the poles needed to be fixed. Mr. Serino was there and he thought it was something that we could get fixed pretty easily. I don't know where that went after that meeting.
Yep, I can fill you in. So after the meeting, Mr. Serino, Athletic Director Serino and Mikhail went and purchased the materials and supplies to fix that. They bought, they had to do some cement work. They had to do some work on the fence and on the net and on one of the poles. So they purchased the materials to do that at Home Depot and spent a couple of days working on it Saturday, being one of them when I drove by. We did have permission from DPW and Town Manager De La Hanty to get some of that work done. And they believe the court is playable now for the season. So we will pull out of, we had locked up some of the tennis court use down at Ingleside Park through Parks and Rec. So we'll now pull the majority of the practice times out of there, opening that up more for the community to use, because it really did block out quite a bit of time.
Just ask a question.
Sure. So we are funding it through Athletics. We agreed to do that. It's a small fee, it's $450. Note to self, I should tell Sue ahead of time. So she probably just wiped out the account. We don't own that tennis court. So technically, that money shouldn't have to be paid for by the school. I just have to go on record saying that. So it was, and it was an agreement between the town and us to do that for a short-term fix based on the fact that we could not, couldn't access Ingleside Park enough for our kids to practice, you know, as a group or as a team.
And also, the time element there where the tennis season is starting, I think tomorrow, we would not have had time to go back to the town and ask them for the money to fix it. So it just wouldn't have worked out.
And I'll get some clarity from Mikhail and also from the Athletic Director.
The Town Manager did offer DPW to help us with that too.
Correct. Correct.
After we finished talking about the tennis courts, we then got into the Miller Field rental fee schedule. The meeting before this for a Subcommittee, there was only three columns for rentals. And at that prior meeting, we discussed adding a fourth one for winter-based community youth sports teams. We felt that we wanted to find a way to bring down that cost for the youth teams. So we came up with a fee schedule that, just for the time being, from when we start renting it through June 6th, because then the field will be shut down for a few weeks for the track being painted and a few other things that needed to be done at that point. So we'll address this again after that, correct?
That's correct.
So that's planned. So what we came up with was a half-day, three-hour minimum, $250. Full day, $400. They wouldn't have to pay for any of the extras except for the site administrator, which everybody has to pay for, and the custodian, which everybody has to pay for. So that was our recommendation. The other columns all stayed the same. So our recommendation is to accept the fee schedule as is. And we took a vote and we were 3-0, nope, excuse me, 2-0 in favor of it. And so we'd like to bring it to the full committee for a final approval.
Is this in line with what other fields like this are charging? Can we check with other?
Yes, it is. We looked at about 16, 16 or 17 different fields in the Commonwealth and then really narrowed it down to about seven, I think seven fields that have been built within the last several years. It's a little bit difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison given the fact that there aren't too many communities that are the same size as ours that the field is under the exclusive management of the public school. So schools like Ipswich, Masco, Georgetown, schools like that have similar fee structure. And then there's some schools such as Riviere who also has a stadium and has different funding sources that are overseeing that stadium. So it's between Parks and Rec and the towns have shared responsibilities. So their fee structure is a little bit different. So we tried to stay with the fees that were similar, you know, in terms of the oversight of the field and who has to pay for the upkeep and any renovations that the field needs. So most closely related would be a Masco or a Georgetown or an Ipswich to us.
I'll make a motion to accept the new field fee schedule.
Second.
Second by President Vecchia. Any further discussion on the motion?
One thing I don't know if this has to be done before is if we decide to lower it, can we then reimburse, say, La Crosse, whoever rents it from this point on? Just so, say, in the fall, we decide to bring it down a little bit, we feel, you know, because we're going to address the cost again. If we do bring it down, can we return that money to La Crosse? Or do we have to stay where we are?
We could reduce it. I don't think you can return it.
Wouldn't be able to return it.
Because when you raise it, it'll be from that date on.
Yeah. We can return the money. You could reduce it.
Right. Because we're going to look at it again. Because I looked at, we looked at the numbers that La Crosse paid for the checks and, you know, it's still certainly more than I'd like to see. But as we look into it further, so if we went the other way, we wouldn't be able to return the money to La Crosse. Okay. So that was my only discussion.
And then just while we're on this, the only question or concern I had, I don't think this committee should give up our rights to rent the field out, but I do think that in terms of last-minute requests, there should be another parameter to grant field use. For example, say, you know, it's raining on a Wednesday and Excel Academy's game is canceled. They can't use, you know, a field in East Boston, but our field is available. And they reach out to Athletic Director and they want to pay the fee. I feel like they should be able to use that if they want to. And our committee can't meet. That's something I think we should address in the near future. Mr. Perrin?
Would that also include the insurance binder requirements or anything? I would be concerned with the last-minute request that we wouldn't have all the paperwork in line.
I would not recommend waiving any of the application process. So maybe the timelines, if there is, you know, something that you want to amend a policy in the future to, you know, waive the full committee approving a building use form, because that's really what it is.
Yeah, just a thought.
Because when it gets, when it gets to the school committee, all the proper paperwork has been completed. So if somebody does need something last minute and is able to fill out all the proper paperwork according to the Athletic Director or myself, it would not come to you for a request until that point. So I'm sure something could be built into the policy that if all the proper paperwork was approved by the superintendent or the Athletic Director, whomever you deem necessary, that the superintendent could make, you know, he could make that decision just knowing that the paperwork was put through. Because typically, it's an exercise in approval. And if you know that most likely the school committee would approve, it's something that would meet all of the Miller Field manual, you know, requirements. You know, I don't think there would be an issue with that, but you would have to amend the policy at some point in order to do that.
What we've just passed is, I mean, what we have, what we have a motion on is the community-based youth sports teams.
Yes.
And so then are we also voting on with or not profit, with or for profit and not with or in this motion?
Yep. And we could always revisit it.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure.
It's the full fee structure. So the fee structure itself is contained within the Miller Field Use Manual. The committee's vote is on the fee structure itself.
We could revisit this.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Ms. Haynes, would you please call the roll first?
Yes, Mr. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Mr. Vecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Mr. Kapoianko?
Yes.
All right.
And now you need to...
Do you want to?
I would take, you're going to do the policy at this time? Are you going to move that to a different?
Do you want to do that now before we stop the transportation?
No, I think that's all we had to do for that. So we should go back to, go back to building grounds. We'll come back to that.
So we do have two Buildings and Grounds requests. The first one is for the ATC PTO. It's a walk for Josh, which is a fundraiser which will be held at the ATC Cafeteria from 8:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, June 16th. They do have all the, all the proper paperwork and all the proper payments. So do we have a motion to approve that? Motion by Mr. Perrin?
Second.
Second by Ms. Swope. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. We also have a request from Winterbrook La Crosse for their games. They have a few games on April 21st, April 22nd, May 6th, and May 20th. They do have the custodial fees and the rental fees. Do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, yes.
Can't take that yet.
We have to do the policy first. We have to do the policy first because we can't...
Although we took the, just the fee schedule.
No, but then the policy has to be, we have to do the policy before we approve that because everything's not official. We can't officially approve it because everything's not official in there.
Because we're approving it without those...
Right.
The policy needs to come first.
Sorry.
President Vecchio withdraws his motion. We're just excited to make sure La Crosse plays, so that's all. All right. So let's move on to the Miller Field policy.
Okay. So we have two changes, maybe additions, I guess, in the Miller, the Miller Field, Buildings and Grounds use policy. And they're both, I guess, pertaining to Miller Field. So we're going to just read the two changes without going through the whole policy. And the first one is, in May at any time, deny use of the field at the discretion of the superintendent. And the second change is, the use of Miller Field as a rental will require adhering to field and facility use of regulations and fee schedule approved by the school committee. The superintendent of schools acts as the agent of the winter public schools and be determined what specific requirements must be met by the individual organization that wish to use the school facilities. So we would need a motion to accept those two changes, those two additions.
President Vecchia makes a motion to approve those changes, seconded by Mr. Fabiano. Any discussion on the motion?
Just a point of clarity. So the additions to, this is a current policy and it's policy KF. It's community use of school buildings and grounds. And the purpose of adding Miller Field to it and making sure that it's memorialized in the policy itself is, we have the theater in here. We have general building, buildings and grounds. But we specify the theater which has a fee structure, a specific fee structure, different than any other fee structure. Miller Field also has a specific fee structure different than the theater fee structure. So that is the reason for the need to add to the current policy just a bit of language to make sure that we memorialize Miller Field now that we've accepted the fee structure. So that would constitute the first reading.
So we have to vote on that first reading, right?
Yep.
And I want to make a motion to waive the second reading.
Under policy...
Motion to leave the second reading. I will second that motion.
We didn't vote first.
We have a motion on the table to approve the change and that has a second.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. All right. So Mr. Matucci has a motion on the table.
Yep. Policy adoption. I'd make a motion to waive the second reading.
Seconded by Mr. Fabiano. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. There we go.
Now we can approve.
Now we can motion that we approve the use of, or the La Crosse, by the La Crosse games.
A lot of mental gymnastics in this.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Matucci.
See what we do?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it.
A lot of mental gymnastics.
Has to be done correctly.
I just want to say on that issue, if I may, that there's been a lot of negativity in the community about this and emails to us. The town made an investment on this issue. And it's, here we are, the second week of April, and there's youth teams playing by the third week of April. So this committee did not rush into anything. We worked diligently and had to make sure that the investment by this town was, everything's done properly. And I want to commend the committee, the superintendent, the Athletic Director, Vasily Malios, and the Miller Fields Committee for all their hard work. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Do you want, my second Subcommittee meeting?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Do you want to do that first?
He's wrong, excited about all of them.
So the second was Buildings and Grounds at the Hobby Room at 5:15 on April 3rd. Myself, Gus Matucci, Jen Powell, and Susan Swope were there, and Lisa. So we were there discussing bus transportation. So we found out that we are not in compliance with the law and the way we do our buses in the town. I want to read the law to you first real quickly. So basically, at the beginning of the law, it says, anybody that exceeds two miles from their school, we have to provide transportation to them from kindergarten through sixth grade. Now, down here, the part that we're not in compliance with is, in the case of transportation provided to students that is not required by this section or by any other general or special law, a school committee may assess fees to the transported student up to an amount sufficient to cover the costs incurred by the district, provided, however, that no student eligible for free or reduced lunch under the federal school lunch program shall pay, shall be required to pay the fee. So basically, anybody that is on free and reduced lunch doesn't have to pay for the buses. And for us to go forward, that creates a possibility of up to 745 students if we went from K all the way through 12.
Correct.
If we just did K through 6, which we don't know that final answer, whether we had to.
Right. So I did find out the final answer. So you are correct in that if presently, winter public schools offers a bus service for a fee for students and the fee is $175. And you pay the, if you pay the fee, you have a bus pass and the bus that circles around the town picks up students close by the school and as far down the point, a little over two miles down the point, the beach area, as well as Veterans Road and the Highlands area. If we, right now, we have about 110 riders and not 110 on the bus at the same time, but about 110 students altogether. If we were to continue to provide bus service and charge students a fee, so that the fee for the bus right now, for the total number of students that we have, we've taken about a little over $14,000, which does not cover the total cost. It's approximately $65,000 a year to run that one bus. And the cost of that takes into consideration the fact that we own the bus, the actual bus that we have. In order to be compliant with the law, we would need to begin to offer for any student in kindergarten through sixth grade who is free and reduced lunch, we would need to offer a bus pass to those students at no charge. And that's about 420 students attending kindergarten through sixth grade in our district now. So if we had to put enough bus seats, available seats, on the road for the 420 additional students, we would probably have to put four to five buses in total on the road. We have a quote from Healy Bus for about 152,000 per bus to put on the road for the year. Multiply that by four and we'd have to come up with quite a few, quite a few dollars to provide transportation.
So just quickly, the 745 that I stated was the whole...
K through 12.
K through 12.
And right now, we're providing service for students K through 12, our 100 and some odd riders, our kindergarten through high school.
But if we went the other way, that would be the K through 6 is the 402 or 420 students.
Correct.
So with this information, we basically realized that we can't continue this service. So we had a motion to discontinue in-town bus service except for the students that are eligible beyond the two miles, hire Healy Bus for all the athletic runs, and to return the buses to Viking Pride, I believe through the town is how we have to do it and all that, but return it to them. And do you want to discuss how we get the eligible students to school if we were removing the buses?
Sure. So right now, in looking at the, I think I have 28 pages worth of enrolled students, kindergarten through sixth grade, and looking by street, so where they live presently, and taking a peek at the mileage from the school at which they attend, which is obviously Fort Banks, Cummings, or the middle school to their address. So every student who lives over two miles. Right now, we have 12 students at the Gorman Fort Banks and nine students at the Alphati Cummings. Of those students, and two students at the Winter Middle School, of those students, you know, very few of them are actually on this present bus. That doesn't mean they won't want to be picked up next year. They will be entitled to be picked up next year. It doesn't take into account kids who are registering for kindergarten. I went by the kindergarten numbers this year. We have kids that register that live the allotted distance over two miles, mostly down the point, deep down the point, Bayswater Street. I've done it so many times, Bayview Street, Billows Ave., those are some of the streets. Brewster Ave., some streets that I didn't even know existed that were down the point. And Townsend Street, Siren Street. So we'll watch that as the students enroll in kindergarten. And then we'll also rerun this close to September to make sure that we are covering it. Every student who's eligible, we'll be able to let those parents know that they are eligible for a ride and then ask them if that is something that they want. If in fact they do, we will be using an, a vehicle that we have, 14, either one of our 14 passengers or one of our seven or eight passenger vehicles. And we will be using staff here who are 70 license to drive probably the seven passengers to pick the students up and bring them. Because the school times are different, we're able to make multiple runs with one vehicle to pick up those students. We're also going to be entering into discussions with Viking Pride and then looking at our own budget as we move forward. They have, to look at whether or not, it would be useful to buy 14-passenger vehicles that we could use for some of our smaller athletic trips as well as our in-district runs in the morning. Those vehicles are, we have some just general quotes from Ford to see how much those are. About 32,000 apiece. And there's multiple ways to have those come into the district, whether it be a lease, leasing of a vehicle or a full buyout, or working with Viking Pride to see how we could keep Viking Pride. We're certainly very grateful for the buses that they have let us, given to us and we've utilized over the past several years. And we'd like to keep that relationship going. We have kept Viking Pride in the know throughout this whole process and they have participated in a lot of our discussions. And this is something that has, we've spent a lot of time looking at in terms of how much it's costing us to send our students out for athletics using our own buses. The amount of time it's taking us today was one of the days where at 3:00, one of our buses didn't work and therefore the La Crosse team could not get to La Crosse. We don't have multiple drivers. So if a driver calls out sick in the morning, we have nobody to back up to drive that vehicle. We have advertised several times for drivers and can't seem to recruit many people. It's no different than the multiple schools that I've talked to in terms of why they subcontract out their transportation. And most of the time it is for the safety of students and making sure you can consistently provide transportation. It's difficult for parents when you call them at 7:00 in the morning and say, I'm sorry, there's no bus today, to rearrange their schedules to get their students. And then with athletics, not being able to get, we have 24 trips in the spring that we've been unable to cover with our own buses and we're struggling with outside agencies at this late time to be able to get them to pick up trips for us. The last thing we want to do is rely on parents to have to get their students to Beverly or Danvers. And the students definitely want to play in their games, so...
Quickly, you talked about the bus, the one bus that we run today costs about $60,000. So we expected with these numbers, we'd have to add two more buses at a minimum.
I would say three to four.
So that, two more buses would be an additional $120,000. Three would be $180,000 at a minimum on top of what?
It'd be more than that. So the quotes per bus from, so those, this is because we own the bus.
Right. So it'd be more because we have to purchase the buses.
If we had to...
Contract it out.
Right.
To subcontract it out to Healy, one bus doing two runs a day, meaning an AM and a PM run. The quote is 150,000 for the bus for 180 school days.
Per bus.
And we would probably, per bus. And we would probably, if we were to continue to do a fee for service for students who want to pay, then again, that opens it up to all free and reduced lunch students. We'd probably have to put four, we'd probably have to have five buses initially on the ground. Now, if everybody doesn't take advantage of riding, it could be less. But it's doubtful that people wouldn't take advantage if the bus was at no cost for the majority of 420 of the students.
So at a minimum, we're talking a lodge increase.
So returning in all the lodge buses, is that correct?
That is...
That's the motion. That's the motion.
Returning in all the lodge buses, so we're going to, this is all going to be privatized. It's going out to a bus company. Have we done an analysis? Have we done an analysis, considering the add-on students? Are we losing money? Are we gonna be paying more money this year in the budget?
So we did do, we did do, we did do an analysis of it and I will pull that out. So we looked at the in-district cost of athletics, you know, provided because we have our own buses that we now use for athletics, plus our own run, you know, the in-district day-to-day run. And so, looking at the cost of, there's many things that go into that. So there's the cost of gas, the cost of the maintenance of the vehicles, the cost of the drivers. For the athletic runs, we looked at all of the athletic runs because sometimes we are subcontracting out anyway because we don't have enough drivers or enough buses to get two or three teams to a spot during a particular season. And right now, the overall cost for this year, we're estimating it at the end of the year to be about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Correct?
If not more.
If not more, well, with the problems we're having for the spring, I think it's gonna be higher than that. But when we did our initial assessment, it was about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand for both the in-district run plus the athletics. If you had to, now if you project to next year, if we could, if we continued to do that one bus of the in-district run, picking up general ed students who are paying plus the additional students that are paying, you know, like Mr. Matucci said, you're talking probably five hundred thousand, easy if not six, just for the day-to-day run. Subcontracting it out, we put it out for a bid and we asked them to split the bid into two, two sections and we received that bid and looked at that probably about a month ago. And in that bid, it was a hundred and fifty dol, a hundred and fifty thousand shy of a hundred and fifty-three thousand per bus per day, but then we asked them to separate athletics. When we got the bid back for athletics, they estimated about thirty-nine hundred miles in athletics at five dollars and fifty cents a mile. And then they also estimate wait time. So in addition to the five dollars and fifty cents per mile times three hundred and, three thousand nine hundred miles, they also do this wait time where they drive, they give you about five hours or six hours for a driver at a hundred and ten dollars an hour. So that, that cost to me was much lower than what I thought it should be. And I thought about the mileage. We sent it out for a bid to three places. We only received the one bid back from Healy. So I called Mark Healy and asked him to give me some sense of, make some sense of this five-hour wait time. How do you predict that? Make the sense, some sense of the thirty-nine hundred miles. Where did you come up with that? And that was based on a bid that Winter Public Schools put out, I guess a year, a little over a year ago to them. And he used the same, the same bid that went out before. So this school district at one point about a year ago, prior to me being here, put that out to bid. I sat down with, with Matt Serino and I said, you know, "I've played a lot of athletics and thirty-nine hundred dollars. Winter Public Schools has a lot of teams. We have JV teams, we have varsity teams. Sometimes we take more than one bus." I felt like that was an underestimate of the amount of mileage. So we sat down and we looked at, we took every run, and I can share this spreadsheet with you at some point. I shared it with the, with the subcommittee. We took every athletic event for the fall, the winter, and the spring and we broke it down by sport. And we traveled to places like Beverly, Danvers, Everett, Gloucester, Marblehead, Med Fit, Pevonie, all of our, all of our runs. We added up the total mileage for every game that we will play in the fall, the winter, and the spring and every team. And then we estimated the total number of buses we would need for each sport, traveling the exact mileage for every game. So I'm gonna give you an example. For the fall of next year, we'll have two football game, we'll have a football game in Beverly and we will need two buses to go to that game. Beverly is forty miles round trip. So two buses going forty miles round trip is actually eighty miles. So just for the fall, we estimated we would be traveling about nineteen hundred and thirty-four miles for fall sports and taking sixty-five buses. So when you add all of that up for each season, the total number of miles over the three seasons would come out to approximately five thousand five hundred and forty-one miles. If you multiply that by five dollars and fifty cents per mile, comes out to thirty thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for the mileage alone. Now you have to do the wait time and this is an overestimate. Originally, we did six and a half hours when I talked to Mark Healy. Today, we both agreed that on average, it's more realistic is five hours. So if you took five hours per, per bus ride at a hundred and ten dollars per hour, we multiplied that by a total of a hundred and ninety-nine buses that we would need over the three seasons and that comes out to a hundred and nine thousand four hundred and fifty. I also talked to Mark Healy about the fact that I found the budget, the estimate from last year, which I was not a part of, that was supposed to be for this year in which they quoted us at five dollars per mile and asked them to consider that if we move forward with outsourcing buses to Healy. So all of that conversation comes out to be about a hundred and thirty-six thousand for athletics for next year. And again, this is an estimate and we drilled it down pretty deep. I mean, looking at the exact mileage for the total number of games that we're gonna be going to. I asked Mark if this was overdoing it on our part to try to figure it out because the last thing I want to do is sit before the school committee six, you know, seven months from now and say, you know, "We thought it was gonna be a hundred and thirty-six, it's actually two hundred and fifty." And I did not want to be in that position. However, I do know that we are a pretty talented community. So if we play a lot of playoff games, it is going to be somewhat higher than that. But to put it into perspective, if it's a hundred and thirty-six thousand and that's a sort of a lower-end estimate versus what we're paying this year, which is a hundred and seventy-eight, take into account that we are gonna be paying a driver to drive our small passenger bus to pick kids up in the morning. Typically, we pay our drivers about fifty dollars a day to do that. So it's not quite two hours' worth of bus travel time at twenty-five dollars an hour. But they're in-district reliable people. That person would probably make, you know, six to eight thousand dollars driving the bus and then a few added gas. With Healy, you're not paying all the extras for the gas. We also looked at the long, the upkeep of the vehicles that we have and the age of the vehicles, the three big buses that we have. One, we're just finishing paying off. The other two are, I know my dad doesn't like when I say this, but circling the drain and they are circling the drain. They've had a lot of work done to them. Tires alone on those vehicles are very expensive. Every time they go down, we have to pay to outsource. Plus, we have to pay, what's the cost to tow the bus to Tuxbury? I should probably know this.
Oh, it's like.
To tow a bus?
Fifteen hours.
So people, those large buses, you can't pull into Expert Auto and ask them to do an oil change or to fix a tire or to take a look at the one light that won't go on so you know you're gonna get pulled over on the highway coming home from Beverly and get a huge ticket. They have to be towed from wherever they are to Tuxbury on some, I don't know, tow truck that tow's big buses. There are, there is no place around here that we have been able to find that is closer that will fix the buses and Nick Reponey has tried.
Right.
I was just, I was just trying to get an idea, everything being equal. In other words, if we hadn't taken that hit with the additional students that we were required to put on the bus. Because we had talked about this so many times over the last couple of years, whether outsourcing would be less expensive. I was just trying to get.
I think it's gonna be. My guess is it's gonna come in at less unless we're overly athletic.
But we're also giving less service at this point. He was saying apples to apples. If we were to do it with outsourcing the whole, if we did it exactly the same, we outsourced everything, how would it come out? I don't know if we have that answer.
If you outsourced everything, including the picking up all the students for free and reduced lunch?
Yeah, even without those. You're going back from last year, right?
Without those, but nothing else, like the small buses that we use. We've always utilized those.
So go back a year. He's looking.
You know where I'm coming from, don't you, Brian?
Go, go back. What he wants to know is, pretend, say we didn't know, say this wasn't the law. What it costs us to do in the in-town run today? If we outsourced that plus athletics, what would that cost be? You don't have that number.
Taking into consideration, we had the buses, the maintenance, the gas, the drivers versus outsourcing it. I wanted, I was hoping to see the comparison.
Well, I think I lost.
No, it's not too cheap. So I think that we said that one seventy-eight was gonna be this year, you know, with the win right now. And then next year, I was thinking, if we just stay right where we at, it's gonna be like one seventy-eight, maybe one eighty like that. If we go this way, the way we're gonna go right now, hopefully, we're looking at one thirty-six plus probably another twenty thousand in the morning to, just to pick up the small amount of kids. So we're gonna save, I'm gonna say at least thirty or forty grand. Now, when the bid went out the first time, they talked about thirty-nine hundred miles. And that bid came from the town, it was a town estimate based upon fuel usage. Obviously, that was wrong. So I think the town is also paying a little bit more money also, even though it's not being charged to the school department with fuel. So if fifty-five hundred miles we were going and we, they bid thirty, they only think we're driving thirty-nine hundred, there's a gap there. The other problem is, this is, I think this is the biggest problem out of everything, is the drain on our staff resources to try to figure all this stuff out, especially when there's buses breaking down, having to call tow trucks, teams await and it's just a nightmare. And it's being right now, it's playing out in this season right now. So with those three contributing factors, this is, to me, is a mountain.
Are we still paying out a stipend for someone to run the product?
Yep, but that's, that's in the one seventy-eight figure.
And so next year, if it's outsourced completely, there'd be minimal, minimal work around the, because you present your athletic schedule to the company and they take care of it from there. The amount of hours and panic that goes into not having a driver, having somebody call in sick, I mean, I had to send Nick Reponey at six o'clock in the morning down to meet the bus because we had had a parent report, an issue that we needed to make sure that we were able to speak to the driver who speaks a different language. So we had to have an interpreter there to be ready to speak with the driver so we could determine whether we were gonna drive or not that day when we're picking up a hundred little people. You know, our goal is safety comes first, you know.
Plus, the maintenance alone costs us a lot. And just to take a bus to Tingsboro and it's like, oh, every two weeks there's a bus, there's something wrong with it, at least. It takes two, we have to pay two drivers because you have to, the driver has to drive the bus down, but then somebody has to bring him back.
Right.
So those are the little things people don't hear about.
Lisa, I know we talked about this before and I understand that this budget does not include the special needs requirements.
Correct.
How much was that this year and would you anticipate that staying about the same?
So I anticipated staying about the same. We made, we made some efficiencies in the cost of special ed transportation. So special education transportation is an entitlement. It's not something that we can choose to do or not do. And it all depends upon the individual students and what their needs are. So I believe we're at about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand in cost for transportation this year, is that correct?
Yes.
Close to, which is pretty sad that I have it off the top of my head, so.
No, actually, it's even more than that.
It's higher than that now?
Yeah, it's almost two hundred.
So close to two hundred thousand.
That's all special ed transportation.
That's special education transportation. And we have, we've made some efficiencies where we purchased our own vehicle, specialized vehicle this year to take some of the runs that we were subcontracting out at a, at a high price to take those off of our daily cost. So that has created some efficiencies. We did have carryover, a carryover bill from FY seventeen that wasn't paid, that has impacted this year's budget. So, so that's another, you know, struggle that we didn't anticipate facing this year. And then homeless transportation. Homeless transportation is another part, another service. It's a mandatory service. Kids who are homeless, they're entitled to be transported. A lot of that is subcontracted out because the students typically are living in another community, either coming back to school here every day because they are entitled to or they're living here and we're driving them to their home of origin, to the school in which they became homeless from.
If you hadn't had the carryover problem from seventeen, would there, would that, are you still thinking two hundred thousand this year?
So we didn't have the carryover problem from seventeen. I would assume that the efficiencies we created in July and August and re-rooting and restructuring how we were, how we were transporting our students, I think we would be whatever that bill is to the good. And I think it was about forty-two, it's about forty-two thousand, so.
Thirty.
Thirty thousand. I mean, we created some, just restructuring the roots and refusing to use certain transportation companies. Transportation is a big business now because the homeless population has risen so high and that entitlement and requirement to drive students to and from school has taken some of these smaller companies and maxed them out. And so when you're maxing out a company, the price of the service goes up. And, you know, you don't, there's not a lot of wiggle room with special ed or with homelessness in terms of finding vendors and trying to, you can't say, "Oh, I'm sorry, we're not gonna drive you because it costs too much." You absolutely don't have a choice. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the table.
So once again, we took, we took a vote and that motion was no in-town bus service except for the students that are eligible, hire Healy Bus Service for athletics and return the buses, the Viking Pride buses back to Viking Pride. We voted three oh in favor of, and then bring it to the full committee.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Fabiano, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci. Ms. Andrews, please call the rule.
Mr. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Mr. Vecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
No.
Mr. Cabrianco?
Yes. All right. Moving on with the superintendent's report.
A lot of things are covered in the superintendent's report today, certainly transportation being one of them. And just a Miller Field, just a quick update. Our athletes have been playing on Miller Field. They've been playing lacrosse and, and running track. The field itself, you know, there's a lot of pride when you see your kids out there because the place is absolutely beautiful. I give a lot of credit to our athletic director who has taken on a very big additional piece of his job. Miller Field was not the amount of work that it is now when he became the athletic director a couple of years ago. So there, the intensity of having to do the upkeep and the learning curve of how to take care of the turf and we thank Viking, the Miller Field Committee. They have provided us with a year's worth of training and oversight of upkeep of the turf. So our field administrator, Mr. Vasili Malios, is training under the company that laid the turf down to make sure that we're caring for it properly. They're teaching him all the techniques of making and moving the, and moving the, what's the fill in that? It's like, it's not a rubber fill, it's like a sand fill. It's better for the environment and better for the, for the kids. We still have a lot of work to do out there. We have, we're gonna be painting the track itself as the field will be shut down. And we're gonna put out on the website all of the dates for that. The field will be shut down for a few weeks to be able to get that track painted and to let it dry. The kids are having a great time out there. They're reporting back to us that they're sliding a lot. So the rain and the amount of fill that's on the field, you really, we really have to get out there and run around on it and make sure that we're, we're beating it up a little bit to get it flexible. But the kids are sliding around quite a bit with the amount of rain we have. So I'm glad they're sliding around on turf as opposed to sliding into holes on the old, old Miller Field and breaking an ankle. So they're reporting that they're happy with it and they like playing there and they seem pretty proud of it. And when you drive by there, it's pretty neat because you see people driving by and they're kind of slowly stopping and looking at the field. I'd like them to pay attention because I have kids crossing the street. But things seem to be bumping along. We're doing a lot of changes with the way we're doing things, what we initially thought in terms of how we're getting equipment over to the field, where we're storing things. Day-to-day, Matt Serino is reporting to me that they're, they're changing, changing plans. And the Miller Field manual is in place, but we'll be adjusting that as we learn more about the upkeep of the field. What else? Facilities update, park update, just playground, Alphati Cum, sorry, yeah, the Alphati Cummings Playground. Is it Utility Play?
Alti Play.
Alti Play, we had them come out. We were looking for a second opinion on the field, on the playground itself in terms of what we may be able to do with that playground. Does it need, you know, the maximum full rehab? Do we need to tear up the entire structure and, and put a whole new structure down? That is what we were initially told. We do have a capital request into the town council. I don't know if that has, has gone out for a vote yet. I don't believe it has. Asking for support in, in funding either rehabbing or completely redoing that. Alti Play. Ulti Play is gonna, is it Ulti Play?
Ulti.
Ulti Play is going to get back to us. He had a little bit of a different opinion on, on the ground itself. We were initially told that it had to be completely ripped up, and that there was no bounceability on the ground, meaning if you hit it, you, there was no, no cushion at all, just in a walk-through. The gentleman felt that there was some, but he was doing a deeper investigation of that, and he was gonna draw up some plans for that. And we will be working, hopefully with the town council, if not within our own budget, to figure out how to make that playground continue to be safe. We still do our weekly walk-throughs, and, you know, if there are things that need to be fixed, then we will fix them. So, and I believe Mr. Harry is gonna ask the students in a, in a survey as to how they would like to see the playground look. My son had a whole different vision, he just wanted basketball nets and hockey nets, and didn't need anything to swing on. But I think his friends may not be in agreement with that. So, we're gonna continue to work, you know, seek, we're gonna continue to seek that quote and see what that looks like, and then share that information back out with the school committee and the town council as needed. The tennis courts as.
On the playground, do we have a list of the repairs?
So, I asked Mr. Harry that this week, and it's been this ongoing, no one's kept an accurate list, nobody has written down every single thing that has been repaired. So, we've been asked for a list of the repairs, so because the list itself doesn't, doesn't exist, they could go around and make the list up compared to when they first did work on that park from the, I believe, the audit, when the audit was done, until now. We've had a couple of different custodians there, so I don't know how accurate that would be. I wouldn't want to give a list that's, has four things on it, if there's been fifty that have been done. So, he was meeting with RJ, who is LaPresti, who is the custodian, to see if he could come up with, there's some things that he has done, at least to show for what, what has been done for this school year. So, he will have that for us. And, as of right now, I believe that is all.
Any personnel?
Personnel appointments, and I may have done this at the, at the last meeting, I just, I put a copy in your packet. Vasili Malios, again, the coordinator of the athletic facilities, I put a job description. I feel that that was important for you to have in the packet. And that job description, I believe, has had some additions made to it, quite a few additions made to it over the past two weeks, and we'll continue to update that. And that's all for appointments. Under resignations, we have none. Retirements, at this time, we have no official retirements. Postings, we have a substitute kitchen worker posting. And athletics, I believe we have the winter, winter athletic positions. And leave of absence, we have none.
New business, so we did receive an email from Kristen Reynolds for God and Negotiation Requests for All Bargaining Units?
We have, and I have spoken with, I put, she had requested two dates in April to meet, and I put that out to attorney Paul Hodnett, who asked to participate in the process. He is not available on those dates, he is getting dates back to us. I hoped by Friday, he didn't, he didn't have the dates by Friday. I did meet with Kristen today to let her know, as soon as we get those dates from Paul, I'll put them out to the committee and then out to Kristen, so she can see if her group can be ready to get together.
In our packet, we do have the amendments to the community use of school buildings.
I think we already did that, right? That one's done?
And we do have the out-of-state travel requests from the WHS Outdoors Club.
Motion to approve the request.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, second by Ms. Powell, any further discussion on that?
Bill said on chaperones?
Yes, he hasn't, he has not revealed the chaperones as of yet, but he will do that. They were looking at specific dates. Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, and I know you wanted to brief us about the international trip to Ireland, because it's not a school-sponsored trip?
I just wanted to be, I'm not sure if there was any confusion with that, that Mr. Nickerson is planning a great trip to Dublin and the UK. They are leaving, I believe, on Friday, and they are touring for eleven days. They are April twelfth to April twenty-second. And, there has been a little bit, there was confusion with me as to whether or not folks were considering this a school-sponsored trip. And I just wanted to be clear that it is not a school-sponsored trip, it's an agency that is overseeing the trip and providing all the necessary arrangements. And we know that they're going, and we're happy that they're going, we think it's gonna be an amazing experience for our students and any staff that is going. Mr. Nickerson is a more than capable gentleman who has done this trip before and has had nothing but great success and lots of really good stories. However, I've had a few folks ask me, oh, you sponsoring that trip, the school sponsoring that? And I just wanted to be clear and forward to be on record that it's not a quote, school sanctioned activity.
Ms. Powell, do you have an opinion on the social media policy and chroma policy?
Chroma policy have been postponed, so we did not take that up. And we had a subcommittee meeting today, April ninth, 1:30 PM in this room, and we talked about the social media policy. We are going to be adapting a policy that has been used by the, many of the schools in the state, and we'll be bringing that to the committee. Basically, set staff should not be using social media inappropriately and making that official.
Any, any public comment? I'd just like to recognize Council Serto, who's in attendance tonight. Public Relations, Mr. Matucci?
Well, sir.
Fabiano?
Ms. Swob and myself are gonna attend the PTO meetings at the Cummings School Wednesday night at six-thirty to discuss transportation. So, any, the, any of the parents that are affected by this, we want to answer your questions and give you the reasons why we made this decision. So, we'll be at the Cummings Wednesday night at six-thirty, that PTO meeting, and then Fort Banks, PTO meeting Thursday night at six-thirty.
Perrin?
Well, sir.
Powell?
Yes, I would like to congratulate the Winthrop Middle School Drama Program on excellent spring showcase this weekend. They had three student-directed shows, as well as premiering their Drama Fest competition show. That competition will be held on the twenty-eighth. Our students will be on at one PM, and the public is welcome to come for that show, as well as for the entire day. We are, have the privilege of being hosts again this year for that, because of our beautiful theater. We also, again, just reminded that there is a baby meeting here.
You'll have to look, Patty will tell you.
Yeah, tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Thursday, Thursday night. Thursday, yes.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Mr. Matucci, all in favor?
Aye.